All right, I'd like to welcome everybody here at our city council and all those who are watching on SF-17, which I did last week because I was out of town, but it makes it so nice that I could keep an eye on everybody. And I did notice that they did start late, so I told them I wasn't gonna leave again, so I was gonna stay back here. First of all, we'd like to start off with our inspirational message and prayer, and we've asked Matt Barber to come do that for us, if he'd come on up.
Well, thanks. I don't know about inspirational, but we'll see. For this setting, I went to Mr. Thomas Jefferson for a couple of quick quotes. "The care of human life and happiness and not their destruction is the first and only objective of good government." Then, you guys can all appreciate this next one, since this is kind of a thankless job, and you get picked on everywhere you go. I think my mom might have had some words this morning for you, she said, so, yeah. "He who fears criticism is hopeless. Only those who do things are criticized. To hesitate for fear of criticism is cowardly. If our cause is right, be not afraid of criticism. Advocate it, expound it, and if need be, fight for it. Critics always have been and always will be, but to the strong-minded, they are a help rather than a hindrance. Take your part in life's stages and play your part to the end." And both of those were by Thomas Jefferson. Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee at the opening of this city council meeting, and we give thee thanks for this community and for those who serve, both elected and as staff and employees, and we're grateful for them and all the things that they do. Please watch over and protect them. Bless the good citizens of this community and help them to continue to be productive, good, responsible citizens and raise their children in like manner. We're grateful for the moisture that we received in our area. Please help us to also be prepared for and protected from any spring runoff that might occur. We're grateful for the freedom that we enjoy in this community and for the heritage and blessings that we enjoy. Please continue to bless us and help us to all do our part to continue to make this place a great place to live. And these things we pray for, in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, dimen.
Amen.
Thanks, Matt. I've asked Councilman Mendenhall to pledge allegiance.
Will the audience please rise and repeat the pledge after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to public comments. Anyone here from the public like to come up? We would love to have you. Brad?
Mayor, council, Brad Gonzalez for the record. I came today to ask that the council and the city officials look at, we have an opportunity, I think. We have a lot of parking in our streets that I think are safety issues, so I would like to challenge the leaders of our organization to look at this opportunity and evaluate maybe some zonings or some ordinances or maybe an enforcement issue, but some of our city streets, when people are parking on both sides, they become one-way roads. And I don't know that going around and writing tickets is the answer, but I think maybe a public campaign with an awareness, maybe some advertising, but I just think that it's kind of getting out of hand as we grow. We're gonna get into our summer months where people start having RVs and trailers and boats on their property or on the street property. I think there's an opportunity to evaluate that, so I'm just kind of putting that plug in. I don't know that it's a planning zoning issue, but or where that might lie. Maybe it's a little bit of both, but I know we have some opportunity, and I just wanted to plug that to the leaders of our community to maybe evaluate that.
Great, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We'll take a look at that. Anyone else like to come up and address the mayor and the council? All right, seeing none, I'd go to council comments. Councilmember Beck?
Ooh, I knew it'd be me, and guess what? I've gotten up, huh?
I like it.
You would.
Councilman Scobes, follow suit. Oh darn, I knew, I knew that was the wrong thing.
No, the only thing is, this next week, we have the animal shelter, we have a board meeting. They'll be going over their proposed budget. I have that, that I'll be pushing out to the council so you can take a look at it. In the meantime, preparation for comments and things. And then, the Veterans Council, their meeting again was pushed to May, so we won't be having that. And that's all I have.
Great. Councilman Mendenhall?
Thank you, mayor. My only item is because Matt mentioned it, I did meet with his mom and the rest of the Rotary Club this morning. I just appreciate the good work that the Rotary Club and the Chamber of Commerce, we met with them today at Rotary meeting at noon at Macy's in preparation for the upcoming golf tournament, which provides over 20 scholarships for people, local young folks, to be able to go to college, and such a good, worthy cause. And just commend the good people of the Rotary Club, of the Kiwanis Club, and of the Chamber of Commerce that do good things in our community. That's really where the rubber meets the road, and you do a lot of good work that goes unnoticed but ends up changing lives in our community. So, thank you guys for all the work you do, and that's all I have.
Great. Councilman?
That was amazing. Mike?
Yeah.
He's a record.
He has set the bar. He has set the bar.
I don't even know if I'm in the Twilight Zone or not. It's been busy. It's been good busy. We've got a lot going on right now. New fire station project coming together, currently out to bid, looking for our general contractor for that and vetting that process. River restoration project, met with a group of individuals that had the help of a group class from BYU, and they've come together with some surveys and some ideas that will make our river area more recreatable, able to float it easier, things like that. And so, we met, we're gonna continue that process. We'll bring a recommendation to the rest of the mayor and the council through that. I did learn something at the UNPA conference, that you don't have to let your battery go all the way down to charge it. That's old technology, in case you guys were wondering. I shared a little bit of a tidbit for once from UNPA. It's all over my head. We had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. Mr. Gonzalez reminded me of that with his years of service on that, and that was very good, and a lot of discussion around accessory apartments and where that will be going in our community or how we will deal with maybe state pressure and try and be out ahead of our legislators with some options and ideas to maybe work on those. Heather's here from the chamber. I wanted to give her just a brief minute.
So, April's actually a really busy month for the chamber. So, our business of the month for April is Summit Spa and Float. They have a spa down on the north end of town, so we're hoping that we can do their celebration on next Thursday. We haven't confirmed that, but that's our hope. We also have our food truck on Main starting. It starts this Friday. So, if you want to know what's coming, you can check the Facebook page. We'll have that up probably tomorrow, or the Food Truck League in their app. They have it on their website as well. Our new networking luncheon this month is going to be held up at the Oaks Event Center. We're hoping to have Woodbury come and speak to us about all the different developments and what's coming into the area. So, that should be an interesting one. Along those same lines, we also have our Valley Visioning Summit. This is our big event for the year. That's gonna be held on the 17th. That's why we had to push up our new networking luncheon. It will be held over at the Utah Valley Convention Center at 9:00 AM. So, if you haven't registered for that, I would highly recommend that you do so. I think it's a good event, kind of along the same lines that Brandon was talking about, kind of planning how we want our county to grow. We can decide and push that information to legislators and not let them decide for us, so. Our Easter egg hunt is a little bit later this year, April 20th, so we are gonna have a great event this year. We have lots of bikes and eggs and baskets are overflowing our office, so it's gonna be great. Revere Health has their grand opening for their new clinic up in the old Walgreens building that they took over. That will be on April 12th. There's a ribbon cutting for Hometown Chiropractic on the 18th, one for Cascade Family Dental on the 9th, and one for 1-800 Water Damage on the 25th. And the last thing I have is the golf tournament is coming up. We are always looking for sponsors, whole sponsors. If you want to donate something for the drawing or you want to have golfers, please let us know. It goes for a worthy cause. Help a lot of local kids get scholarships, so. That's all I have.
Thanks, Heather. A few more things. Met with the South Utah Valley Solid Waste District. We approved a tentative budget for the year, and then we liquidated a little bit of our land around the transfer station as we will prepare to build the new transfer station just north of the jail. And so, we sold just under eight acres, or started the process of that, to go final to a power wash, large commercial truck wash that will sort of complement the Loves Truck Stop there in Springville. And then, lastly, I just wanted to tell Chief Adams, congratulations on being the Chief of the Year here and throughout the state of Utah, so it's incredible. He leads well, and just congratulate you on that. That's all I have, mayor.
Great. Councilman Argal?
Thank you, mayor. I'd just like to mention, so this last couple of weeks, attended the Water Users Conference in St. George, and listened. It's always good to hear how our state is preparing for the future with the growth that's going on in our state and preparing for our water needs, as far out as 2060, which seems a really long time, but the growth of the state is continuing to grow. Some of the busiest counties is Utah and Washington, of course. Also, our UNPA conference, which is our conference with our member cities for our electric, to review where they're at as we continue to prepare for the future, have good electrical sources, and also green sources that we have. It was a great conference. It's great information that we get from UNPA and the great job that they do to provide power to us and our other member cities. I also would like to voice, I had the opportunity to go to the conference in St. George, the Utah Chiefs Association, where they recognized our Spanish Fork Chief, which is Steve Adams, as Chief of the Year for a medium city, and what a great honor. It makes me proud to know him and the recognition, the recognition that they gave him down there for our city makes us look so great. We have such a good police department and police officers, and Chief Adams does such a good job of that, and keeping them guys well-trained and prepared for the future. It takes a lot of his own time and training to be prepared for what's going on as our world changes. And from when I was a kid to now is so, so much difference, and it just amazes me is the things that he's prepared for in the future and to keep our city safe and prepared for the future, and I am grateful for that, Chief Adams. Thank you for all you do. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, I just wanted to let everyone know, it was pretty awesome to have all our city council down here to that, some of these conventions that they're all invited to, especially the UNPA. You know, not all the cities get everybody down there from their council, and I just want to let the council know how much I appreciate them all coming and sitting through those two days of meetings. And, yeah, it's really good, and I appreciate that. Also, I wanted to mention, I don't know if it was mentioned last time because I wasn't here, about Miss Spanish Fork. I don't know if you mentioned that, but I just wanted to say we've got a new Miss Spanish Fork, Morgan Reed. She'll be awesome, and I just wanted to thank Stacy for the great job she did emceeing that. And if she can just get the bubbly, crying mayor off the stage, we'll be displeased on that. The other thing, I received an email today. I forwarded it on to Chief Adams. It's called Safe Wise, and Spanish Fork was ranked the seventh safest city in Utah. So, I think that's pretty cool, that of all the cities in the state of Utah, they ranked Spanish Fork as the seventh safest, and I think that's a lot to do with our police department and especially our Chief of the Year, Chief Adams, and so thank you for that. The other thing I wanted to shout out, there was a few incidents where we had fires throughout the city, and I just want you to let our fire department know how much we appreciate them. You know, that's a volunteer fire department that saves the city a lot of money, and a lot of dedication goes in in what they do, and it goes unnoticed. A lot of the citizens don't realize that, in our fire and ambulance, and so when they're called out, they're there, and no matter what's going on, and so I just want to let them know how much, as a mayor and a council, we really appreciate what they do for the city, and let the citizens know that also. Okay, moving on, let's go on to Spanish Fork 101. Spanish Fork Reservoir Cleanout and Sand Replacement. You can go ahead and let everybody know who you are.
I'm John Waters. I'm the Water Division Manager. This year, we had the task of having to clean out our city's pressurized irrigation reservoir, commonly known as the Oaks Reservoir. We needed to clean it clear down to cement, go through, inspect all the cracks, the outlet inlet structure, and rebuild it. And I give that task to Jason Jarvis. It's the first time that we've ever tore this thing down since it was erected. Quite a project, and Jason's got a slideshow, picture show to show you, and he'll kind of explain and go through what the process was. But I'd like to thank Jason and have him come on up and talk to the council about it.
I can see that he's just excited to come on up here. It's all right, we don't bite.
All right. I'm not too worried about it. I just, first of all, it isn't, I mean, it might have been a project that I was working on, but I've got a whole crew of guys behind me that did all this work. So, as far as that goes, they all deserve it, and it ain't just me, I guarantee you. So, we were tasked to do this reservoir. We were just to drain the pond and check for cracks, do some inspections and stuff. Oh, John, what did I do?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hit the, I'll put it up again. Hit the right arrow.
I'm left-handed.
We still got your left hand, so.
Let me turn it upside down.
There you go.
All right. Okay, so basically what we did, we drained the pond. This is what it looked like when we got it down there. Lots of moss, lots of dirt and stuff. You see a bunch of rocks and some, you know, wood crappings out there. And that stuff basically was fish habitat. We, so this is, this is the dirt. We get it all drained out, and then we just mucked it out with loaders and dump trucks endlessly, and got all that dirt out of there until it looked like that, which is just the concrete bottom. And then, when we got to that point, a good question?
No, I was just gonna say, when I first saw that picture earlier, I thought that was actually when we first constructed it, because you guys got it so clean. That's impressive.
Yeah, so this is, I mean, you can see, we even had a little sweeper that we borrowed from the fairgrounds and stuff to sweep it up, just to inspect all the cracks, and then we went through and crack sealed all those cracks in the bottom before we put the fish habitat in there. So, this was us just kind of cleaning up the cracks, spraying it off, washing it. We kind of ground the cracks bigger so that we could seal them up. We go back one, so as you can see, we just kind of, you can see the cracks, that's on the top of the concrete, and we used the crack seal machine to just seal all those cracks off. And then, we trucked a ton of soil back into it and replaced the habitat. And then, we put this last layer of handrails in.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, that if the water's down lower, they will always be able to get a hold of the handrails or whatever. And so, we finally got them done because it was available to us, and then we're able to start filling it up. So, that's what it looks like today, except for we've started hauling the sand in for the beach, and so that's gonna take us a little while. I'd say by the end of this week or something to try and finish that, and then it's just cleanup on the way out. So, that's what it looks like today. We got that much sand in. Probably, like I said, all day tomorrow if it's not raining, because it's not easy for them trucks to come into that dirt road. But if it's not raining and the weather's okay, we're gonna be able to probably get a big chunk of that knocked out tomorrow, and then hopefully by Thursday, we're done with it, but I'm not sure.
What kind of sand are you putting back in, contrasting with the rock?
Good question. The sand is a mortar sand that, and it's just really, really fine sand. I talked to the guy, Rick, that sold it to us, and he told us that that sand specks out to be on the PGA Tour's sand traps, so it's expect.
Yeah, we better go up and confirm that.
I mean, there are enough.
Go check that out.
So, go kick your shoes off and give it a test.
So, it's finer than it was before?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I don't know what sand's like. I never spent any time in there, but I know, I know Kier. Kier spends a ton of time. He would be our resident inspector of that.
More than David.
Yeah.
So, if you guys have any questions, that's all I've got.
It's great, so they.
That's a good project.
You stocked it?
No.
When you're doing that?
So, I spoke with Mike from the DNR, and he said, he wanted to just let me get through with my sand and my project, and then they'll come in. I still got a little cleanup to do on that dock where they back in and dump their stuff, so I need to kind of clean that up on my way out, and then they can come in and dump it. So, but he's aware, and it's gonna be as soon as we can get this end in and put it up. They're ready. They just have to get in.
Did you find anything that you were shocked about finding, anything from?
Goldfish.
Goldfish. Lot of goldfish let go out there.
There was a lot of goldfish in there. Yeah, there wasn't, not really. Well, there was a giant tire.
Big tire.
That big old tire right there. I don't know how they got.
I remember seeing that down in there.
I'm assuming that a couple of high school kids decided it'd be fun to roll that thing down. But I don't know how that got.
How many ore paddles, how many?
I've seen a couple, but I didn't see a lot.
One of those was Chris Thompson's. I don't know how I know that.
You want me to put it back?
I appreciate it.
We cleaned it up, percent?
I did not.
Cell phones? You didn't see any cell phones?
I think there was a lot of some of that, but it was so, it was so hard to muck that out that, I mean, we were, it was basically muddy water that we were picking up at the end of that, and it was, so you really didn't see anything in there, but.
Didn't find Jimmy Hoffa?
No, we didn't. Looked for him, but yeah, we didn't. But, I mean, it's, it was a long process, and we tried really hard to beat it, to beat the weather, and we got most of it done before it got bad, and then we only had the beach left to do, so. It's been done for a while, just waiting to finish off the beach.
I know. We came up and a few of the council members went up and looked at that when you had it all cleaned out, and it was pretty impressive.
Yeah, it was pretty cool.
See that like that, so.
Did you find many cracks, many issues to do?
Really, no. We didn't, that bottom, everything looked great. And, yeah, it's weathered really well. I hope they don't drain it ever again, so. It's weathered really well, and I don't want to do that again.
How old is it?
What is that, John? Seventeen years?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's been in for like seventeen years, yeah.
Our first summer with it, I think, was '03.
Yeah.
With it in service.
The rez.
Yep, so.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Tell all your crew, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Good work.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, that's awesome.
We should have him present Chris Thompson's stuff every time. Yeah, he didn't ask for any money.
All right.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. New business, safety data sheets, CDS online contract.
Do you know what an SDS, what the SDSs are, safety data sheets?
A safety data sheet.
So, just as a quick example for those out there who don't know what an SDS is, it is every single chemical that we purchase, we are required to have a SDS for that, a safety data sheet, so that if somebody were to come in contact with that chemical, it has instructions on there as to what they need to do. So, for a couple of reasons, we're recommending that we go with an online service. Right now, those are in binders throughout the city. We have approximately, we're estimating about 500 of those sheets at different locations, and you can imagine the maintenance of those, and if you ever did have to access them, could be quite challenging. So, we're recommending that we move to an online service to do this, to keep our employees safer and also make it easier to maintain over time.
That's a good thing. I know all about this on personal experience, so I've had to do it in some of the building constructions that I've had to do.
Gotcha.
We've had to supply these, to have them on site where we're working. So, any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
I move we approve the SDS online contract.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, board appointments. I would like to make a few board appointments. First, on the yesterday rodeo committee, I'd like to appoint Kevin Parker or reappoint Kevin Parker. On the airport board, I would like to appoint Claire Anderson, Matt Taylor, Brian Park, Mike Mendenhall, Brad Brown, Mark Patey, and Dwayne Barr. And then, on our wastewater treatment facility advisory group, I'd like to appoint Chad Argal, Chris Thompson, and Corey Pierce.
I move we approve the mayor's board appointments.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second one by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Before we do that, can we pull one item into a discussion for Chris? It was in the work session, but he.
Jason, where's Jason?
Is the inaccurate metering policy?
He'll be short.
Well, good thing we haven't voted yet.
I'll table my motion for a minute.
Okay. Oh, you heard that? One minute. This'll be on the first.
So, last year, we talked about how we needed a water meter technician. We talked about how we have quite a bit less water meter, water employees than a lot of cities, and we just felt like we needed a technician to go and spend a lot of time with our meters, making sure they're accurate. And as he's gone through, the city started with our larger meters. He's found. And as he's gone through, the city started with our larger meters, he's finding some larger meters that have not been accurate, and that's good, that's what we hoped he could find them and get them fixed. But that being said, we've kind of had an unran policy to back charge up to three years when meters have been under reading. It seems like when meet, whenever meters wear out, they underread, they never overread for some reason. And so one of the, our concerns with that is, it's a, it's a financial hardship with either a, a business entity or a governmental entity, or a, like, a lot of times, these large meters are on townhomes and high-density housing with HOAs that can ill afford a big back charge bill. And, and so it, it's our recommendation that we go away from that policy, we just fix it and, and we correct it going forward, and, and then we just look at, you know, this new water meter technician is, is doing a good job for us, and hopefully we'll, we'll keep this under control. And then also look, we, we consciously didn't have one of these meter technicians in the past, and we saved a lot of money in having a smaller staff, and, and, and so I think you could look at it that way and say the city hasn't lost too much money in, in these back meters, but that's our recommendation. We want to get your advisement on this. This is an administrative policy, it's not normally something you put in your, your municipal code, but before we made that change, we wanted to, to get some direction from you if, if we're going in, in the right direction.
I like it.
She likes it the rest of the flight.
Thanks.
And that was almost a minute. Nice job. You're learning, grasshopper.
Okay, motion to go into closed session.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Beck, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Scouts that were here, this was a great meeting to be to. Thirty minutes, hey, you did well, and you get full credit for this, so, nice job. You picked a good one.
Get some candy.